Okay, mics are on. We are back from our break. I think what we're gonna do possibly is skip the next break, the next scheduled break at 1:30 so we can catch up on time a little bit, so if anybody needs to excuse themselves.
Raise their hand.
We trust you just to walk out and come back. You just have to carry a big hall pass.
Yeah. So, welcome, Mr. Glenn.
Thank you for having me. I'm here to provide an update on our BOSS program, The Business of Success Beyond Sports, and I figured before we update you, we would give you a little video to show you what it is. If that's alright with everybody. Actually, so it's a year-round, multi-year program, right? STEM-focused math, science, language arts, critical reading, argumentative writing, and we start that year-round process with an intensive two-week camp where we get to know each of these boys and what makes them tick and what their unique needs are so we can build a plan for them. Okay, so we made it through that. So that's a highlight of our two-week camp. It, every day is the same. We start off with one hour of non-sport-specific athletic training, that's our jump start. Then we spend a couple hours in the computer lab. Our high school kids and the middle school guys spend two hours working on math. And we have speakers, a subject matter speaker at 11 o'clock every day on everything from the dangers and powers of social media to how to use constructive criticism to transforming beliefs. We believe simply that if you can change their mind, you can change their choices. If you change their choices, you change their lives, okay? That's a simple rule that we follow. And so today, we're gonna talk about where we got started, how we got to Long Beach, enrollment and growth, both in students and in the curriculum, and the impact we're having on the kids, and fundraising efforts. We started BOSS five years ago in Los Angeles at Challengers Boys and Girls Club. And you can see from the picture, we had one room and we had about 20 kids, both boys and girls. Even then, though, it was a STEM focus with math and science and field trips to places like Applied Minds, which is like a Willy Wonka chocolate factory for geek lovers and that sort of thing, and then bringing in people that look like the kids who have not only looked like them but come from the same places they come from, who've had similar experiences, so that when we tell them they can win, they can believe us because we came from the same place they came from. Three years ago, now I'm from Long Beach and I have four sons who are products of the district, all of them honor students. My oldest son is a lawyer. My second son has got his masters. My youngest son is a senior at UC Santa Barbara. And in a nutshell, we're just doing, for these boys, same thing I did for my kids, same thing that people did for me, is that it's changed my attitude about school and the connection between my achievement and the rest of my life. And we've grown now from the two dozen kids that we had in Los Angeles, what is that, Challengers, to now about 125, actually about 140 kids since we prepared this slide. And we have kids from 12 of the 20 middle schools and four of the high schools represented in the program. We deliver year-round programming from the College of Business at Long Beach State through a partnership with Long Beach State, and this is really a nice kind of situation that we have in that we work with the Men's Success Initiative on campus. Those are the young men of color who volunteer to serve as mentors for our middle school kids, and then we help those kids at Long Beach State, like two of them you saw in the video during the Keywood, Inglewood Stadium, they actually get paid internships through Keywood, which is one of our sponsors. We've helped Long Beach State kids get into PhD programs at University of Kentucky, University of Syracuse. We just helped two of them who transferred, I guess, part of the promise from Long Beach City to Long Beach State in one of those majors that wasn't included, physical therapy, and they're now, they'll be working at Exos, which is the largest organization in the nation that provides health and wellness to corporate. They started out just providing that service to professional athletes. So like I said, so we've grown from 25 to about 140, about half of the kids are middle school. We have 10 sets of brothers, that is, a younger, older brother, and we have two families that actually have three boys in the program. And the program is just expanding by word of mouth, pretty much. I mean, our focus is kids who play sports and because we know, I know, that many successful people attribute their success in life to their participation in sports when they were kids. Character built, lessons learned, camaraderie, all those same kinds of things, and actually the attitude to win, so that everything that we do is competitive. I heard about the NBA, the Math Basketball Association earlier, so we have a math madness. Everything is, March Madness is going on now, and so our kids spend every day competing in math. It resulted in a 20% increase in their test scores with a pre- and post-camp assessment that was developed by one of the PhD professors over at Long Beach State. The curriculum, we worked closely with Long Beach State, the argumentative writing, critical reading, that was taught by graduate students at Long Beach State, so we have a strong partnership with them, where we help, their students help us, we help their students. We just had a showcase of BOSS as part of our fundraising weekend where we exposed BOSS to 200 kids who are not in the program who are Long Beach Unified School District students, and already we've got more than 30 of them that have signed up. To the left, the schools that we have kids, and to the right, schools that we don't, and we've actually just reached out to all of those schools that we don't have kids, hoping that we can get in front. We've been actually to those schools, and we just keep working until we can get some kids to understand the benefit of being part of the BOSS program. The curriculum's expanded. We have a strong STEM focus, like I said, science and math. We get year-round learning through a partnership with Microsoft. And the biggest thing that's happened recently for us is we've been able to raise enough money to actually hire a program manager, okay? So that I don't have to spend so much time on the, in the program, but I could spend time on the program. And performance, impact metrics, working with Chris Lund, we've been able to produce, and I don't know if, I can't read that from here, but I can send it to you. What I can tell you, it shows, is that the boys who are in our program are performing boys who are not in the program in all of the categories that the district tracks. And we've only just begun. We, like I said, we moved here three years ago, and when we came here three years ago it was just a two-week camp. Last year was the first year of our year-round programming, and so this year, we actually also provided tutoring, real-world experiences, mentoring opportunities for advocacy and service for the boys during the school year. Near-term, or actually, I can just read this. The near-term goals are to improve self-perception, body language, attendance, attitude, values. Really, the short term is to make sure that these kids are all high school-ready entering ninth grade. Long-term, they'll be college-ready entering 12th grade, and then longer-term, they'll graduate from college and then they'll come back to help us in the program. And we already got examples of that. One of the kids who was our counselor in our first program when we went to Los Angeles is a Long Beach Unified kid, Daniel Anderson, who has since graduated from Vanderbilt in engineering, and now we helped him get a job at Keywood. And now he's come back and brought Keywood as a sponsor to the program. So it's like a full circle kind of a deal. So we're bringing resources to these kids and to the district and to the city that hadn't existed here in the city before in terms of helping Long Beach Unified School District children, like the Los Angeles Lakers and the Los Angeles Clippers and the Los Angeles Rams and AEG and Keywood and Turner Construction, some of these organizations are now interviewing on Long Beach State's campus. They didn't do that before. And so we, we like to think we, like, are aligned with and helping the college promise, you know, become real to these kids. Because it's one thing to get them into school, but how do you get them out of school and get them into a job and in a career? So, so the positives, this year was our second fundraiser. We recognized some leaders and legends around Southern California, again, bringing people to Long Beach, Jim Hill, who's shown there to the right, Naomi Rainey, who is actually, Naomi Rodriguez is actually a Long Beach State grad, and she's the vice president at the Los Angeles Dodgers now, and we were able to raise twice what we did last year and again, enabled us to hire our first employee. I'm totally a volunteer, living off social security, and I've got lots of good friends who have the wherewithal that they can volunteer their time, and that's how we've really been able to make this happen on an almost all-volunteer basis with year-round, hands-on, 24/7 connectivity to these kids. I mean, I've showed you my cellphone, and I've got messages like, go like for two years with some of these families, parents, moms, and kids and that sort of thing. So what's next, we actually gotta figure out how to manage because the program's becoming real popular, and so one of the things I'm thinking is that we won't take high school kids anymore. We'll just start with the, actually, we got, we have two third graders, a couple fourth graders who are brothers of kids who are older in the program. I think we'll just focus on the middle school kids, except for the high school kids who are currently in the program, we'll see them all the way through. But as they, what we're finding out is that if you get into high school, and unless we've had a chance to be with them, it's hard for us to get them to think the way we want them to think, like winners, at everything that they do, no matter what. So our program manager, she just came aboard, she's got her masters in education from USC. She worked at SC for three years, worked at the University of Washington, and actually is over at Long Beach State in the College of Math and Natural Science. So she's working with us on a part-time basis, but she's already asked us if she could quit her job and work with us full-time because she enjoys the impact, because you can, at this age, with middle school kids, you can really see the impact on their lives. And like I said, we've got some new friends. We just formed Athlete Advisory Board. I made a living as a lawyer. I've been practicing lawyer for 42 years, come from nothing, dad alcoholic, mom with a ninth-grade education. So again, we can tell them with authority that I don't care what your circumstances is, you can make excuses or you can make money, but you can't make excuses and money at the same time. And so because of my background in post-sports, we're able to tap in to people like this, to bring on, again, to bring resources and to the city of Long Beach and to the children here. The original BOSS is the guy Clark Kellorg on your list here. Clark, I represented him when he played in the NBA. He's been for 25 years now, broadcast on CBS, NBC, and he's come out here to Long Beach from Columbus, Ohio, at his own expense to pour into our children here in Long Beach. Robert Gustavas also represented, he came out of Arizona State, and again, now what he's done is getting his company, AIG, to donate money to the program. Ralph Jackson is a UCLA great who's at Morgan Stanley now. Willie Goff, I represented him when he played, and all of these guys are bringing their resources, their networks together so that we can help Long Beach kids. And our newest supporter is another native Cleveland. I'm from Cleveland, Ohio originally, although I've been in California for 40 years. And Rich Paul, who is the founder of Clutch Sports, whose clients include none other than LeBron James and Anthony Davis, and now Draymond Green and a whole bunch of other players, will be bringing resources to help Long Beach kids win at no cost or expense to the university. So I wanted to, I don't have any students with me because our kids are in class, but I do have a video that I can show if somebody can help me figure out how to do this. So this is just a random group of our kids who share what they, how BOSS is impacting them.
My name is Jacob Brennan. I'm in eighth grade and I attend Nooko Academy in Long Beach. I play soccer and I run track for my school. I would like to share some of my experiences with the BOSS program and how it has impacted me as a person. While I've been a part of the BOSS program, I got to travel to many different places. For example, back in February 2018, I wrote an essay to the Lakers League Foundation about my relationship with Denver and how it has impacted me in school and life. Me and Mr. Edward ended up winning the contest and was flown onto the manager's for a total of four days. While we were in Atlanta, he got to visit Martin Luther King's birthplace.
Hello everyone. My name is Christian Reyes. I'm 13 years old and an eighth-year student after I left middle school. I play baseball, basketball, football. I'm from Seal Beach and right now I'm still undecided about whether I should leave. I've only been with BOSS for about six months now. That has worked a lot so far. I've learned how to advertise, start a business, I've refreshed my cooking skills, and overall I've gotten, I've gotten a lot better in various areas. Then I've been to large-scale companies, they've also given us a lot of insight about how to keep a young man on the good track to success. The BOSS program is not just an academic program though, but a self-building program that builds good character in everybody that does. As a person that loves emotional sports, it makes it a little bit more challenging to keep up with all my schoolwork and other activities.
Good evening. My name is Dylan Ballard. I'm 13 years old. I attend Dembrow's Learning Academy and then Independent Homeschool. I play football for the Lakewood Longhorns, and when I grow up, I'm going to be a professional football player and an architect. When I think about the BOSS program, I think of athletics, academics, and generosity. Every day before our summer camp classes, Mr. Glenn had Coach Anthony, had Coach Anthony, who is a current NFL football player, teach us different drills for footwork and speed. Also, a special speaker ranging from a former college football player to an NBA referee, talked to us about the importance of a backup plan and a good education. Speaking of education, I've learned so much during the two-week summer camp and the BOSS Saturdays that are throughout the school year. I've learned how to make and present a business plan with Microsoft, how to properly summarize different books, and how and when the USS Iowa, the former military warship, worked.
My name is Darius Williams. I'm a sixth-year student athlete at Hoover, Lakeview, and Lakewood. I'm from Lakewood, California. I'm going to be an NFL, be an NFL player later as well. I also plan on becoming an NFL team. I play running back and corner football and quick guard at basketball. My big brother is a college, and I have been a part of the BOSS program since somewhere in 2017. Originally, only my brother was a part of the BOSS program. Until this year, Everett saw me in my mom's work car, and she was judging my brother. He asked my mom why I wasn't staying for the summer program. She told Mr. Everett that I was only in fourth grade, and then he asked if I was staying, and the worst is history. BOSS has taught me how life as an athlete is so much more than this sport. I have, I have learned how to introduce myself as feet to the ground. I've also learned how to navigate the correct way and ask favor of purpose. Before joining BOSS, I didn't know what networking was, but now I know, I know how important it is. Because of BOSS, I'm going to have to be a better, a better leader on and off the court. And really.
My name is Jennifer Pierce. I'm in 11th grade of a middle school and I play basketball. I've been with the BOSS program for over four years and I've been back there since Long Beach, I've been there for a while. I'm going to lock in this program. I'm going to learn how to code through Microsoft, how to build Long Beach operates, how to eat healthy and be fit. I'm going to learn how to save and stay in note, and that math can be fun if you either send people to competition, especially when you're in a competition. This program has changed me for the better. If we're not in this program, I will not be the unmanaged student today. This program has taught me, got me a lot of essential skills that I was never been able to learn on my own. It's taught me not only how to be a man, how to be respectful, and a positive role model amongst my family and peers. I love basketball, and I've been playing since I was eight years old. I always dreamed of becoming an NBA player. Did a BOSS program, I learned how to dream. I was learning that basketball, I learned that basketball is not who I am, but one of the things I do. I still dream of becoming a basketball player, but now my goal is not to only one-day play for my favorite team, but only one. The BOSS program has taught me that education is key, whether I'm drafted in the NBA or not, whether I'm an NBA team or not, I need communication and a backup plan. Not only have I learned a lot through this program, I've experienced more than I could dream of. I've experienced my first baseball game, went to Dodger Stadium to watch Dodgers play. I experienced my first football game, went to the Rams play. I experienced my first basketball game, went to the Staples Center to see the Lakers beat the Mavericks. These are games that I'll never forget. This program has shown me, it showed me that I can be successful outside of basketball, and it shows me people that look like me, who have struggled more than me, but still under determination to become successful in life. This made me ask myself, if they can do it, why can't I? I ask myself this question anytime I start to become discouraged.
I'm, I have a third-year student has been attached to the coach right now. One thing I like about the BOSS is our mantra, always do what we want, no matter what, and that's true because there are teachers here that don't let anything stop them from each other, or you, just do what you want. So if you like, if anybody tells you negatively, don't listen to them because they're ruining your life, they're not your dad. While you're out there seeing them, they're gonna be, they're gonna be looking up to you, be like, why aren't you just with us? Or why aren't I friends with them? If you're friends with them, you're gonna be like, hey. BOSS is opening up a new window that you can us as students, as kids, they can open connections for us, where when we become in that position, we have people to go back on to help us, like looking, so we can have a good life. Thanks for supporting BOSS.
My name is Ellen Longstreet. I'm a study student at the Long Beach Unified School Initiative. Being part of the BOSS program has been a great experience for me. What I like about the program are the principles that are taught and add value to being a great person and leader. Being part of the, of BOSS has helped expose me to a wide range of professionals such as lawyers, software engineers, drafters, and many other professionals in different fields. There's a famous quote that sums up what being a part of BOSS truly means to me. You all have heard of John Wooden, right? Great. This quote says, "Be more concerned with your character than your reputation, because your character is what you really are, while your reputation is clearly what others think you are." I've always felt like I'd be a great leader one day. The BOSS program has helped me be disciplined, focused, and persistent, while exposing me to different fields that I have had, that I have the opportunity to excel in. I thank God for the opportunity to be a part of BOSS, the BOSS program, and I thank you guys for supporting BOSS.
So there's six principles that we mentally BOSS, emotionally, physically, socially, spiritually, and economically BOSS, and everything that we do is based on those principles. And I think I left you guys with a two-page, which is like a typical Saturday. One, a couple Saturdays ago, we spent time with the Big Five of Money, how to make money, save money, protect money, invest money, and our next gathering, we actually canvassed all the kids to determine what career fields they wanted to go into, and so what we did was put together a meeting in April where we bring in architects and engineers and software developers and law enforcement folk and lawyers and doctors and scientists, and let them have one-on-one conversations with these kids about what does it take to get, like a gap analysis, so to speak. does it take to get, like a gap analysis, so to speak, with, you know, what their present state reality is, and what their future, and what they have to do between now and later in order to make that happen. So, so we're putting into them grown-up concepts that, I mean, Jim Collins, Good to Great, Robert Kawasaki, and those kind of principles, that we're putting into these kids in the fourth and sixth, fifth and sixth grade and seventh grade, which is why you hear them talking about owning stuff, not working, I mean, the cash flow quadrant, they can talk about all of that stuff, they can talk about the four stages of learning from unconscious incompetence to unconscious competence, and, and how you, what you have to do to get through those stages. And so if you guys could help us at all, it would be to get more of your schools to get excited and so we could help their kids. Like I said, we, we're in about half of the schools now, and we will continue to work with the ones that we're not in, to get in them. And so that all these things that happened in high school, we're fixing all that stuff. In fact, I'll tell you a story about it, one of our kids, Mackay Williams, is a ninth grader at St. Anthony's, and he's a, you know, like, four-point-oh student, he's been with us three years, that was Darius, the little kid, that's Darius' big brother, Mackay. And the Munzer Foundation is one of our funders, and they came out for a site visit, and the person from Munzer wanted to talk to some of the kids, I just said, will you talk to anyone you want to talk to? You don't, I'm not gonna pick them, I just pick whoever you want to, so she picked Mackay. And she talked to Mackay, and she later called me and said, but this kid was so mature, and he was able to carry the conversation to me, what are you doing? And I said, well, he's gonna be over at St. Anthony's in the fall. She says, oh, no wonder, he's going to St. Anthony's. I said, but no, no, he hasn't been to St. Anthony's yet, he's been with us for three years. That's how we're sending him over to St. Anthony's. So, so they're coming high school-ready with the, with the attitude, which determines the altitude that they can achieve, that there's nothing that's gonna stop them. And if they have something in their way to them achieving success and joining the ranks of the successful, they let us know, and we'll eliminate that obstacle for them.
Just really appreciate you being able to come in and showcase what your program has done in the short time that you've been in Long Beach. And I know that you've been working very hard to bring these young boys in, and also to, to look at resources to help the program. So, and, and I do thank you for, for recognizing me, I appreciate it.
Yes, well, we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for Dr. Williams. I mean, I've known him for a long time, and even though we went to Los Angeles, it was just like the big city kind of a deal. But after two years, I realized that I may as well have been in New York, in terms of trying to do, in fact, Los Angeles has come to Long Beach now and asked us to bring the program to Los Angeles, and I told them, no, we, we're gonna stay in Long Beach, and we're gonna grow and develop the program in Long Beach. I also like to thank Chris, I've thanked him before, but the district this summer, because we've grown every year and provided more resources and opportunities to the kids, but this summer we were able to have Chromebooks. We have access to the computer lab, but now that we have enough kids, we have middle school kids in one class and high school kids in another class, and the fact that we have Chromebooks enables us for the kids who are not in the computer lab. Because the math madness that we do is through a program, first in math, that we work with Robert Son out of Philadelphia. So, thank you for that, we appreciate it, and I'm hoping we get all of them back to you guys. But it's just a passion for me, I do it, and I don't get paid to do it, I don't need to get paid, but just seeing the change in their lifestyle. The one kid, the second to the last kid, Tavian, who say was eighth grader, tensured, now he's a tenth grader at Milliken. And if you saw him now, you wouldn't even, you wouldn't even recognize, he don't look nothing like that kid right there. He's just a totally different kid.
Well, we want to thank you for all that you do for our students, and thank you for being here today. But unless there's something else, somebody wants to add?
Quick question, thank you for your work. What are some of the challenges and/or obstacles that are in the way in working with some of the students at the other schools?
The schools where we don't have kids represented?
Right.
Oh, I don't know, I mean, we've been to those schools, many of them we've been to, like Robinson, not Robinson, but what is it? We've been to all of them more than once, some of them we've been to once, like Avalon, we have never been to. But I don't know, I mean, I think that the teachers, the administrators, I don't know what motivates somebody to take advantage of free help for their kids, but maybe you guys can, can inspire them to take advantage of us, because we don't charge anything for what we do, and we take them places they never would probably go to, and, and experiences that they might not ever experience, even just the aerospace deal for two days. We actually had three weeks of camp this year, because we've been two days at aerospace. And so I, so I don't know, I mean, we just, but we're not gonna give up, because all we do is win. So we're just gonna keep going back until they get it, right?
Thank you.
Thank you for your
Thank you so much.
Quick question, what's the process? So if a parent or a student hears about it from their friend or sees this and is interested, what's the process for them to apply?
Well, we got an online, we have a paper application, we have an online application. There's no, we don't chair pick, we take them, we move them from, we have one kid who actually from Franklin. This is his third in the program, Marcus Frazier. He came over, he was an F student, a nice straight-A student, and he actually moved to San Diego. But he comes up from San Diego to continue to participate in the program. This is his third year with us. So, I mean, we don't care what their situation is, and we're moving from failing to poor, from poor to fair, and from fair to good, and from good to great.
So if we meet people interested, we can just pass along the website, and there's a link for an application there?
Yes.
And they go to go, all right, perfect, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you again. It's always good to hear about successful programs, and yours is definitely successful.